Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we met earlier this evening for a study session on facility maintenance issues. No decisions were made. As well, for the record, I'd like to note that Councilmember Cooper is excused. So with that, I need a motion for tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved, which takes us to special recognition this evening. We have three items under special recognition. First one is recognizing our American Legion Post Three and their donation of flags to be hung in the city. I'd like to invite David Gedros to speak to the background of this gift. A little bit that we do know is that the city displays flags on certain holidays, and we do that throughout downtown. And over the years, the city's stock of flags has depleted due to aging, and we always make sure our flags are in good condition. So why don't you speak to that, Mr. Gedros?
Okay, very briefly, the last time I was here, I mentioned that the American Legion is celebrating its 100th anniversary, and Post Three has been in Olympia for 100 years as well. So for 100 years, the American Legion Post Three has provided flags and put up flags around the city. We still do that on the Capitol campus. But for the last 20 years, the city crews have been putting up the flags on the city streets. And so when Steve Hall asked us if we might consider replacing some of the worn flags, we were delighted to do so. We're delighted to be in partnership with the City of Olympia for this. So tonight, we are proud to say we've brought 100 flags that we're donating to the city. We hadn't brought them all here. We have one flag we'd like to present to the mayor, and we'll have our adjutant Scott Olson do that. The other 99 have already been taken upstairs, so we're glad to do that.
Thank you so much.
And Scott actually was the one who put all this together and ordered them and brought them here.
So I believe the next holiday we'll be showing our flags would be Veterans Day? Do we have them up for Veterans Day? So make sure to note and thank the American Legion Post Three when you see those beautiful flags on our posts. Any comments from the dais? All right, we go to item number 2B, and that is, this is a special night for Olympia middle school students and the 2020 Water Resources Stewardship Program. There's an art calendar contest that Erin Conine, our senior program specialist, puts together along with Susan McCleary. And so for the third year, the Water Resources has held an art contest for Olympia middle school students to promote stormwater pollution prevention and water conservation practices. So we're debuting it tonight, so lucky you.
Mayor Selby, council members. Again, I'm Erin Conine, Public Works Water Resources.
And I'm Susan McCleary, Public Works Water Resources.
We are excited to be here for the third year in a row to recognize middle school students, some of which are now in high school, whose work was chosen for our next Water Resources stewardship through art calendar for 2020. We received a record number of submissions this year, this past spring, and they were all fabulous. It made the selection process super tough, but we are so proud of the great artists that we have in this community, especially in the middle school age. This calendar is a really great way to bring awareness to stormwater pollution prevention and water conservation best practices, and we're so happy to have these talented artists help us spread the word with the community. We'd like to take this opportunity to introduce each artist that was able to join us tonight. Please stand when we call your name.
Jocelyn Cruz, and this is for Don't Drip and Drive, Fix Vehicle Leaks, which made the cover spot on the calendar this year. Grace Matsuoka, Take Shorter Showers. Sam Cook, Don't Let the Water Run. Christine Zhang, Install a Rain Barrel. Adeline Crone, Practice Natural Lawn Care. Beatrice Wilhelm, Use a Commercial Car Wash. Jacob Gronka, Water Landscapes Early or Late. Carol Camerath, Scoop Bag and Trash Pet Waste. One of my favorites. Shandana Raba, Install a High-Energy-Efficient Toilet. Emma Hodavance, rake a drain. Owen Garcia, Only Rain Down the Storm Drain. Michaela Onley, Be a Leak Detector, Find and Fix. So we'd like to thank you once again for your contribution to our 2020 calendar this year. We couldn't do it without you. Calendars will be available at each of our local middle schools, as well as City Hall in early December. Information on next year's contest can be found on our website at olympiawa.gov/calendercontest. So make sure you come back next year and try again. We'd love to have you. Councilmembers, mayor, do you have any questions for us this evening?
I just want to make a comment that I see some future traffic box wraps artists up there. Definitely keep that in mind as well. So anyone else? I think we're going to get a picture together with all the kids, right? All right, so I'd like to invite our council to come on forward and--
Artist, can you step forward?
Conflict Resolution Month. So October is recognized as Community Conflict Resolution Month in the state of Washington. The city will recognize Community Conflict Resolution Month and the role of the Dispute Resolution Center of Thurston County in the Olympia community. And I'd like to, before I introduce, I have Jody speak, I'd like to read the proclamation so that I can hand it to you, and then you can speak to why this month is so special to our community. So whereas federal, state, regional, and local governments have an interest in promoting civility, improved communication, and the use of mediation to settle a wide range of disputes, and whereas the City of Olympia promotes the use of their community-based dispute resolution center by citizens, and whereas anyone in the city of Olympia has access to their community-based mediation center to resolve conflicts between family members, neighbors, tenants, landlords, merchants, consumers, employees, employers, civic organizations, and government agencies, and whereas mediation is a uniquely effective means of settling disputes, as attested by 87% of situations being improved as reported by participants, and whereas community mediation centers serve jurisdictions and taxpayers in Olympia, significant resources and time and money annually with Thurston County District and Superior Court, cases that have been settled in mediation rather than in court, and whereas conflict prevention via training for adults and youth and conflict resolution via the mediation process increases the quality of life and opportunity to experience civic harmony for all residents of the City of Olympia, whereas the 3rd Thursday in October has been designated as International Conflict Resolution Day for the past several years, and whereas the month of October has been designated as Community Conflict Resolution Month by the state of Washington and Thurston County for the past several years, now therefore be it resolved that the city, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Conflict Resolution Month, signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 15th day of 2019. Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor. So I should introduce you. I just got caller Jody. So Jody Subir is the executive director of our local dispute resolution center and has been such an asset to our community. And, you know, like the proclamation stated, there's so many ways that you can contribute to helping people get through their disagreements.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor Selby, and thank you to the entire council for this proclamation. It's really an honor to be able to serve our community this way. It's really quite simple. Our interest is to help people communicate through conflict with more ease and with more respect, and we do that in partnership and in collaboration with many others in the community. So that's why this recognition is so appreciated.
Wonderful. Any comments from the dais? Well, I know that you've helped us with many dispute resolutions here with the city and residents, and I think in this time of our, just our world and how we communicate with each other, what you bring is really a gift.
Thank you.
Keep doing the good work.
Appreciate that. Thanks so much.
All right, that takes us to this evening's time that we dedicate to public comment where we get to hear from our community. I want to remind people that we are in that time of the year where we want to remind folks that we can't allow people to speak in promotion or opposition of a candidate or any ballot measures. You have three minutes. There's a countdown clock over my right shoulder. As well, we have 30 minutes set aside, and we have 14 people signed up. So if we were to hurry, and if people could be brief if someone else is speaking to what they're already addressing, that we might be able to get through everybody in the first half hour. If not, we will make time at the end of our business meeting. So with that, there are also upcoming public hearings in the next 45 days that you also aren't allowed to speak to, but anything else on the agenda is fine. So with that, I'll call out three names, and that way we can stage people quickly and they can get to the microphone in a timely manner. And so I have Danae Rosen, followed by Sarah Joseph, followed by Shannon Partey.
My name is Danae. I live in Olympia, and I love Olympia. Something is very wrong here in our town. Panhandlers with children out during school hours flying signs and then driving away in a nice minivan. Vagrants jumping out in front of vehicles in an attempt to get an insurance payout. Stumbling junkies hunched over like broken marionettes on their way to get more needles, the same needles which end up in our flowerpots, our hedgerows, our creeks, and forests, and wetlands. Tweakers flailing around screaming at passersby on the sidewalks and in the roads. Self-important and titled and, dare I say, bratty tent dwellers who threaten and assault people who come into the camps to take photos or document what goes on there as if they're the ones that are paying the taxes to be there. Bicycle chop shops in the woods, broken-down vehicles and debris sprawling the length of an entire city block. Bicycle couriers delivering drugs to the camps. Human excrement on the sidewalks. I would hope that stormwater pollution prevention includes keeping human feces out of our waterways. Sex offenders camping out wherever they please. You don't know where they are. I don't know where they are. None of us do. The cops have tied hands. That goes for Washington State Patrol as well. We have groups who dox and harass people who speak out against this dystopia that has been created here. A vagrant can walk into these chambers with an open beer in a brown paper bag. It happened last week, but we can't clap in support of one another because it's a safe space? And you can say that I'm cherry picking, but these things are not the exception. They are the rule. They're the norm. If I were cherry picking, I'd be talking about the homeless individuals who've been run out of town by these camps, and they're too intimidated to ask for the help that they so desperately need. I'd be talking about our senior citizens on the brink of homelessness that have lived here, worked here, and paid taxes their entire lives but somehow don't qualify for assistance. I'd be talking about the young man I heard speak in Lacey who lives in his car, who proudly declared last week, "I will not stick a needle in my arm to qualify for services." Those who ignore history are doomed to repeat it. Your liberal policies and the policies of your equally liberal predecessors have totally ruined our home. It's not working in Seattle, or San Francisco, or Sacramento, anywhere else. I don't know why you think it's going to work here. Stop lying to yourselves about what's causing this crisis. Stop lying to us about where our tax dollars are going. We are not going anywhere, and we're going to continue to show up week after week until we see change. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Joseph, followed by Shannon Partey, followed by Candy Mercer.
Thank you. My name is Sarah. I spoke to this council before about increasing crime and a recent criminal element preying on the general public. I was then referred to the City of Olympia homeless response. Let me be clear. Tonight only, I am speaking about increasing crime and addiction, nothing else. Citizens have stated their concerns about rising property and other crimes, open drug use and filth downtown left by the addicted and the criminal, only to be paid lip service at best. The problem is too large for a city this size, and there is a reason for it. Drug dealers go where it is easy, where law enforcement is lax, where addicts are plentiful, and right now that is Olympia, Washington, and this is unacceptable. Many citizens were addicted in the past or have had loved ones who are currently in the throes of addiction. We know that while you can love the addict, allowing and excusing their antisocial and criminal behavior will drag you down, and it is dragging a city down. Once again, I ask, please find your political backbone and let the police do their job. Arrests for open and public drug use, but especially go hard for the dealers. Spreading the misery in this community. There is drug dealing going on in the mitigation site, and this is happening in your name. If you won't use your leadership position to facilitate more effective law enforcement, please step aside and let another leader do what is needed for the future health and safety of this community. Again, I ask, why aren't the police and the crisis response team regularly visiting the unsanctioned encampments? This is a huge missed opportunity to offer services to those who are lost and who can be helped while making it rather uncomfortable for the criminal element that have no intention of becoming a part of our community. It is also a missed opportunity for the city to partner with other campers who also want a safe and healthy Olympia, and I have talked to those campers myself. It is shameful that the City of Olympia passively allows criminality and addiction, and this dysfunction is now bleeding out into neighboring communities, and it is no surprise to me that Yelm and Lacey, for example, do not want to repeat our mistakes. And it's time for us to be a better neighbor and a better example for them. I've been told that city council members would rather meet one-on-one to discuss our concerns, and unfortunately, I have to say that the lack of leadership has led to a lack of trust. I choose to address you here. I want your response or non-response on the record. I want any ideological and portless word salad on the record. Every statement, every out-of-touch remark, every acknowledgement of this problem on the record. I don't want any more citizens of Olympia hurt by lack of leadership. What are your plans to arrest and prosecute those who use and deal especially illegal drugs openly in our streets? And what is the worst that could happen? You may save a life. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Partey, followed by Candy Mercer, followed by Maeve Flanagan.
Hello, my name is Shannon Partey, and I thought it important to reiterate something I read already. In the interest of preventing the misuse of legal precedent by some in society to garner advantage over others or be given special treatment under the law, in the much-talked-about Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision in Martin v City of Boise, the court of assembly held the following. With respect to cruel and unusual punishment clause of the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, the court noted that this clause circumscribes the criminal process in three ways, including by placing substantive limits on what the government may criminalize. The court noted that Powell v Texas, the United States Supreme Court, with Justice Thurgood Marshall writing for the plurality of the court, found constitutional a Texas statute that made criminal not alcoholism, but conduct, appearing in public while intoxicated. In Powell, the court responded that the state of Texas had not sought to punish a mere status as California did in Robinson v California, 1962, whereby it made status of narcotic addiction a criminal offense. The court also states that the entire thrust of Robinson's interpretation of the cruel and unusual punishment clause is that criminal penalties may only be inflicted if the accused has committed some act, has engaged in some behavior which society has interest in preventing. The court explains that five justices of the U.S. Supreme Court gleaned from Robinson the principle that the Eighth Amendment prohibits the state from punishing an involuntary act or conduct or condition if it is the unavoidable consequence of one's status or being. The court then stated that this principle compels the conclusion that the Eighth Amendment prohibits the imposition of criminal penalties for sitting, sleeping, or lying on public property for homeless individuals who cannot obtain shelter. The court noted that any conduct that issue here is involuntary and inseparable from status. They are one and the same, given that humans are biologically compelled to rest whether by sitting, lying, or sleeping. The court emphasizes that its holding was a narrow one, stating that we in no way dictate to the city that it must provide sufficient shelter for the homeless or allow anyone who wishes to sit, lie, or sleep on the streets at any time and at any place. We hold only that so long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction than the number of available beds and a shelter, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntarily sitting, lying, and sleeping in the public. Bottom line, don't read the court's decision in Martin as supporting broader protections for the homeless population than the court intended. Some criminal and all civil infractions are still a part of the government arsenal when confronting lawlessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Candy Mercer, followed by Maeve Flanagan, followed by Eliana Kelly.
Thank you. I went to visit the Fourth Avenue Bridge Camp yesterday, and I'm still processing what I saw. I saw humans who are struggling to do the best they can with what they have, and I can relate to that. I was also lied to on several issues were misrepresented, so it's hard to form an opinion when you're not able to parse the truth. I'm going to have to follow up with certain people to try to get at some level of the truth, but when pressed, there were some obvious lies that came out while I was there that they corrected to me. But they lied to my face just the same as, everything they told me was with the same tone, the lies or what was not the lies. I'm not sure what is what. I was told that drug use was limited to only in the tents, yet there was an uncap needle on the shore that someone nervously covered up with a rock. There was a large trash-sized, kitchen trash-sized Sharps container that was full. This is for 20 to 25 people. The residents complained about a lack of respect. They told me that theft and stolen goods were not allowed in the camp, but I saw, as we were leaving, I saw two men walk by carrying bike parts. We have to speak openly about the drugs, and we have to start dealing with this as a drug problem. I ride the 62. I cannot leave the house without seeing a person in drug crisis every day. I carry Narcon because I see people passed out on the ground. I see guys on the ground writhing in withdrawal. I've seen more than once someone who's in a severe tweak get on the bus and just suck the air out of the bus because of their erratic behavior and not knowing what's going to happen, and we're in an enclosed space. This is traumatizing to me and to others. My discomfort is not a reason to act, however, but it's real. I'm afraid of losing my house if I'm broken into by someone using drugs. The drug crisis has rippled through the community, yet the council rarely talks about it. Please start talking about it.
Thank you. Maeve Flanagan, followed by Eliana Kelly, followed by Jerry Durker.
Please forgive me. I have never done this. I've never spoken in front of anybody, and I came to rile. I was really riled up, and after touring the Fourth Avenue Bridge yesterday, my thought process has changed. I moved out of Olympia a year ago because I didn't feel safe here. I didn't feel like my family mattered here. I paid my taxes. My husband's a hard-working man. My children were involved in activities, but they were afraid to go to them. So we chose to move, and we moved up north. But I still maintain what the IRS considers a second home here on the water. So I still have an interest here. My mother is in long-term care here, so I'm here frequently, and I support my friends and my acquaintances. Each of us has our own experience, and I can only speak to mine. And the three of us walked out of there yesterday, each feeling something different. I'm more humanitarian aspect. My heart broke for a handful of those people in that camp. These are the same people that I said, no good, drug users. We lumped them all into one category, and I learned yesterday that's not always the truth. So my heart breaks for the Fourth Avenue camp, and instead of riling, I assume I can address Mr. Hall, because it was pointed out that you oversee the Olympia Police Department, and we'd really like to know, why are they being told, or are they being told, to stand down and not go in the camps and pursue the drug dealers that are familiar to them, the sex traffickers, the child predators? I can tell you, two campers went to the mitigation site, and their claim was that they had removed the drug dealers from their camp, and they went to your mitigation site. And when they felt that you all were going to sweep them again on September 11th, they made arrangements to stay in that mitigation site, and within one week, their belongings were destroyed and then completely disappeared because the drug dealers were retaliating against them. If you know who these people are, why aren't we going after them? Why aren't we focusing on the dealers? So I hope you can answer that. I won't take up any more time for everybody else, but that's really all I have to say, and I appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Eliana Kelly, followed by Jerry Durker, followed by Barrett Gale.
Hello, my name is Eliana Kaye, and I'm speaking on behalf of Climate Action. As you may have seen, the climate strike on September 20th was a huge success with over 2,000 people in attendance, and just to reiterate, this was completely organized by students. I'd like to thank the council members that were in attendance. You know who you are. For those that did not attend, I hope you had good reasoning, or you can make up for it by truly listening today. First off, thank you for your work on the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, on top of all the other immensely valuable work you are doing. It is not the lack of action that I am worried about, but rather the sense of urgency. Mayor Selby, last time I spoke, you responded by saying that Olympia is doing a lot, which you are, and to instead go to my school board or other community leaders, or on top, I should say. While I see your point, everyone needs to be held accountable. I will also argue that no government in America is doing enough to combat climate action. The City of Olympia is doing a lot, but not enough. For this reason, I urge you to fast-track the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and to find sources of revenue and start allocating funds ASAP. The city cannot wait until June 2020 for the release of the TCRP report. There is great urgency to act immediately. In case you have forgotten, the IPCC warning predicts 11 years left to avoid catastrophic climate breakdown. However, we don't have 11 years to act. We have zero years, and we need to be acting now. At the strike, we had a letter-writing campaign where-- At the strike, we had a letter-writing campaign where approximately 600 cards were written by citizens from over 20 cities in the region. I'd like to read a few of them here. These were written by middle school students. Children who are just learning their ABCs shouldn't be the first ones to stand up and say that we need to make a change. Adults need to start paying attention to the depleting world around them now. The next one reads, "Please do something. I wish to live happily, and you are going to be able to help me. You're not my enemy. You are the person who can make this happen." Once again, I thank you all for your dedication to this work and the courage you have to continue fighting. I'm proud to live in a city that values my future. Each of you, as I'm sure you know, are very privileged to be able to serve this community. So many people are looking up to you, not just to make change, but to blaze a new path for climate action and to show cities around the world just how much is possible. Thank you. And I have the letters here if I'm able to give them to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Durker followed by Barrett Gale followed by Jennifer Post.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Durker. I wrote something to you guys last week, I think you got. I also should let you know that last week I discovered that the complaint that I had filed on you guys and the Chamber of Commerce and the port and everybody else apparently got lost at the Public Disclosure Commission when the Attorney General sent it back to them. So they had, we had to refile that last week. The city has failed to properly disclose information on their lobbying activities of the state legislature and other portions to the Public Disclosure Commission under their L-5 rules for lobbyists. Also, the lobbyist that was under the Shared Legislative Agenda partnership is a member of, actually a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce is one of the partners on that. That person also doesn't have the ability to lobby for you because he's not registered as a lobbyist other than his F1s. He has never registered as a lobbyist for you guys or for the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce is not who you contracted with to do this legislative lobbying campaign. They're not licensed or registered with the Public Disclosure Commission to be a lobbyist or in any way, shape, or form. Sorry. Similarly, the city has forgot or failed to create 2018 lobbyist report for lobbying the state legislature through the Shared Legislative Partnership Agenda, et cetera, and that's one of the problems with the complaint. Finally, this, because this has to do with the Chamber of Commerce and the city's involvement with that and the port and the county and others involved, this is a type of problem, as I noted, under the appearance of fairness doctrine, that prevents certain things from happening, like the city can't have an attorney that's the Chamber of Commerce's, the port's, who's a partnership, a partner, both of whom are a partner with the city on various things, and those partnerships create that conflict of interest and violates the appearance of fairness doctrine, and that would vetiate anything that the city does, any of those conflicts of interest like that, those partnerships with the chamber and others that they regulate. Because like the port, there are a number of places that you regulate. So I would hope that you clean that up, and I'm sorry I had to refile that thing, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Barrett Gale followed by Jennifer Post followed by Renee Dars.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Barack.
Barack, sorry.
No problem. I had the privilege of attending the September 20th climate strike at the Capitol. I'm not a particularly religious person, even though I'm quite active at our local temple. However, I believe that I can recognize prophetic, a prophetic voice, and I can tell you, the youth at that climate strike spoke with prophetic voice, not just about their own situation, but about the future of our kids, our future, our civilization. I'm not a particularly religious person, but I had the privilege on occasion of hosting a Torah, our sacred scroll, in our home, and I can tell you that it had a real energy to it, an energy from all the profound wisdom found in the scroll. And I can tell you, as I hosted these cards that Eliana gave you on our table for a period of time, there was a lot of wisdom in them, and I'd pick up a card now and again, and I was profoundly moved by the prophetic words, by the inspiring words from these youth. I want to just read a few of these from high school students. "I always loved dystopian novels, but I didn't think that I'd be living in one. This matters. I want change and a future. This is the most important thing you will do today and tomorrow. Please fight for my future. I really want to make it to be middle-aged. I can vote in a month, and I'm extremely excited to do so. Please support action to help our oceans and lands. There will be nothing without climate actions. We won't have jobs, rights, et cetera."
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer Post followed by Renee Dars.
Hi, I'm Jenny Post. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am also nervous, so pardon me if I just read my statement. I am a relatively new government employee, and after 10 years of purchasing insurance off of the market, I am finally getting insurance through my employer, but I'm still paying a premium of $450 a month, or about 20% of my wage. This doesn't include the $1,000 my employer pays for their part. So $1,500 per month for health insurance. For what? Even if I don't use it, I still pay the premium. If I have to go to the doctor for something, there's always copays and other unexpected out-of-pocket expenses. Thankfully, I've been pretty healthy, but what would I do if I wasn't? For about two years, I've been involved with an amazing group of people working in Olympia and across the United States for healthcare justice. We are fighting for Medicare for All, and more specifically, we have been working to pass H.R. 1384 in the House. This legislation has five key components. One, it would put into place a single national healthcare program instead of our patchwork of insurance coverage. Two, it covers all medically necessary services like preventative care, reproductive care, dental, vision, mental health, and long-term care. It's free at the point of service, so no copays, deductibles, or premiums. It covers everyone in the United States, and it has a jobs transition element. Anything less than that just props up the current healthcare system that is cruel and dysfunctional. It's pretty simple to me. This is not a radical concept. There are plenty of examples of countries providing healthcare as a human right. Insurance companies are racking in millions of dollars in profit while people die because they can't afford medical services. It's disgraceful, and it's not just a small group of progressives in Olympia either. There are hundreds of thousands of people across the country being led by nurses and physicians that are demanding healthcare justice and Medicare for All. Unfortunately, there are also people in a position to do something about it and improve the lives of millions of people, but they are choosing not to take action. I don't think I'm allowed to say names, but there are congressional representatives in our area that have chosen and refuse, that have chosen to refuse to not support H.R. 1384. We don't need health insurance. We need healthcare. It's about getting people, it's about getting people healthcare when they need it, and it's about it being free at the point of service. I am asking for your help in our struggle to change our profit-driven insurance base system to one that puts our health first. Will you stand with us behind these demands?
Thank you. Renee Dars followed by Talana Reed.
I'm Renee, and I live in Olympia. I don't like to public speak, so I wrote it down because I wanted to make sure I hit some key points. I want to first ask the council, have you forgotten who you work for? Vote you in. The simple answer is taxpayers, homeowners, and citizens of this city. We are tired of not being heard. Why is it only the hundreds matter and not the rest of us too? Can someone explain how the Martin versus City of Boise decision of Ninth Circuit Court was translated here in Olympia to mean those sleeping outside can break all laws and city ordinances? If you break laws or ordinances, you should pay the consequences. There should be a real platform available to citizens where we can brainstorm and offer reasonable solutions and actually feel like we're being heard. If the people on the street want help at taxpayers' expense, they need to earn it. Millions have been thrown at this with no visible solutions. We wouldn't be having this discussion if it wasn't for aggressive behaviors, panhandling, garbage, human waste, and discarded needles. There have been campers in forests for years. We never complained because we weren't seeing what we are seeing now. What I see on a daily basis is mind-blowing. I have seen fights, nudity, people urinating, garbage everywhere, and using drugs publicly, and even a dead body. I see needles on the ground across the city. Aggie Hop should do a real needle exchange. This would keep a lot of them from being thrown on the ground. I saw a man overdosing recently. I called 911. They decided since he said he was okay that they would take his word for it. I had my grandson with me, which forced me into an explanation about doing what's right, no matter how we feel on a personal level. For the record, we are not humane, inhumane. We are just tired of not counting. I have had profanities yelled at me for no reason. I've seen roads get blocked in some sort of aggressive stance. I have had people come up to me, not asking, but demanding that I give them money. I saw someone give a homeless person food, and he threw it on the ground, even though his sign said he was hungry. Obviously, it wasn't food he was after. I have read the Point in Time census. It says there are 835. I don't believe that number. I believe there are far more. The city cannot sustain homeless that are not our own. Documents say main cause of homelessness is related to economic and family stability. Maybe at one point this was true, but I feel it no longer is. When you close the camps, were services offered? How many accepted? Our environment is taking a hit. Olympia used to take pride in our environment. What happened? Take notice, because we are watching, and we're going to hold people accountable. And just for the record, I am not inhumane. My goal is to see them get help.
Thank you. Talana Reed, and that will be, take up our first 30 minutes, and we'll call the remaining people after we get our business meeting completed.
Good evening, council. It's been 435 days, and Yvonne McDonald's death investigation has yet to receive the attention it deserves. Renata, thank you for meeting with me. I'm still waiting on the council's response to my request for an outside, for an external investigation. Unless you are blind or have literacy issues, there's no way that after reading the first 15 pages of the police narrative of this case, that any one of you could say that the Olympia Police Department did a stellar, conducted a stellar investigation. I have some questions tonight for the council, mostly you, Mayor Selby. How many of you have actually read the police report in this case? If you have, please share your thoughts on the quality and thoroughness of the said report. Mayor Selby, it is more than appropriate for you to work with staff to resolve resident complaints and concerns. I don't expect you to have all the answers that are asked of you, but I do expect for you to acknowledge that my family, or any family, deserves answers regarding the conduct of city employees, accountability issues, policy. What would possess you to send me the following email in response to my request for a meeting with you? Hi, Ms. Reed. Thanks for reaching out. I've been slammed with city and personal business this last week, so I apologize for the late response. I was thinking that you might find a meeting with the new director of Safe Place a good place to start with your safety concerns for women of color. Her name is Sarah Lloyd, and she's an amazing asset to our community. I've attached a link to an article on her recent appointment at Safe Place. She is an amazing person, but I don't think you've talked to her. I know she didn't know that you were going to name-drop, and she's just as appalled that you would refer me to Safe Place in regards to the death investigation of my aunt, which was not related to domestic violence. It's insulting, it's insensitive, and it's just outright disrespectful, and you need to, I would like to know why you did that. Your response had nothing to do with Yvonne McDonald. Mayor Selby, you obviously didn't check with Ms. Lloyd before you name-dropped. You've never even really spoken to her at all. Police, medics, and city workers are, in my opinion, responsible for the death of Yvonne So pawning me off on Safe Place is not only insulting, but reeks of racism. My issues are with the city of Olympia and Thurston County. Please tell me why you made such a ridiculous recommendation, Mayor Selby.
Thank you. That concludes our 30 minutes of public comment. We will take up the remainder of the list after we finish our business meeting. At this point, I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls this evening? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. That takes us to item 6A this evening, and that is a special recognition, presentation of the Mentor Court Award to the city of Olympia by the Center for Court Innovation.
Quick point of order. Just for folks that maybe haven't been to a council meeting, we will address the public comments at the end of the meeting after the remainder of the public commenters have been heard, so just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks, Councilmember Rollins, for that. Yet, public comment is unfortunately more of a one-way conversation, and then after we've heard from everybody, then we have an opportunity for the council to either ask questions of staff or just make a direct response back to the commenter. And that will happen after we complete public comment. But right now, we are receiving a presentation regarding the Mentor Court Award that we recently received for our community court program, and at this point, I'd like to invite Diane Whaley, who is our community court executive and our public defense coordinator, to basically emcee the present, for that presentation. All right, Diane.
My name's Diane Whaley. I am the public defense coordinator, as well as the community court executive. I'm here just to give you a brief introduction on our community court, but you will be hearing this evening from the Honorable Scott Alf, who's going to give you a community court update, along with Cassandra Sinclair Nixon, one of our 2019 community court graduates, as well as Brett Taylor, who is accompanied this evening with Caitlin Flood. They are here from New York, from the Center for Court Innovation, and they are going to present us with a Mentor Court Award. I would also like to recognize with us this evening in council chambers, we have a portion of our community court core team present, court administrator Miriam Olson, public defender Diana Dutch. Defender Diana Dutch, Case Manager Marlo Martinez, and Chief Prosecutor Rosio Ferguson. So Olympia's Community Court is one of 70-plus community courts in the nation. It is a therapeutic court in which defendants that are charged with low-level offenses in the City of Olympia are given an opportunity to have their case dismissed, as long as they meet certain individualized tailored conditions. There are a number of conditions that could be imposed. Some of those conditions could include connecting with social service providers right here on-site at the Olympia Municipal Court. They meet with those providers in the Community Court Provider Building so that those providers can then give recommendations. The court can then court-order the defendants to follow through with those recommendations. Other conditions could include a letter of insight on a particular topic, as well as possibly work crew or community service in order to give back to the community. There are a number of different uniquely tailored conditions that the defendant could have imposed, with the idea that the defendant is then stabilized, to make the defendant then self-sufficient, with the overall goal of having increased public safety and public trust in the City of Olympia. Now, there are a lot of reasons why our Community Court is unique. But one aspect of uniqueness in the City of Olympia is the fact that we have such a wide variety of social service providers that are available on-site here at the Olympia Community Court. They are available on Wednesday mornings in a one-stop shop in our Provider Building. Not only do our providers connect with our defendants on-site before court, but what makes us even more unique is the fact that our providers are actually in the courtroom in order to give feedback on particular issues as they arise at that time. Now, we are a court that started with no budget. We had four providers in a hallway connecting with our defendants. And I'm very proud to say that since January of 2016, we have now grown to 17 providers. We have tried to fill all sorts of niches, and we have such a wide variety of issues that we can now address. Some of those issues include housing. We have at least three different providers that can connect with our defendants right there on-site to address housing issues. We can address mental health, drug and alcohol issues. And we can also provide on-site mental health and drug and alcohol evaluations from the very first day that the defendant comes to court. That's practically unheard of in the traditional system. Since we started in January of 2016, we've had over 1,124 links or connections that have occurred on-site in our Provider Building and on-site at the Community Court. It's important to note that you don't have to be charged with a crime in the City of Olympia in order to take advantage of the services that we have on Wednesday mornings. We want our Provider Building to be open to the community, so anyone can walk in off the street in order to connect with our services. And with that brief overview, I'd like to turn the floor over to the Honorable Scott Alf. Thank you.
There we go. So, thank you again for having us tonight. I am Scott Alf, I'm Judge in Olympia. I've been here for 15 years this month, and so it's been a long time that I've been here. And the things that we do over and over and over again in the past don't work. Then we need to change what we do, and with that is Community Court, and those things, things that we do to make those changes. It's taking the individuals and addressing them. It's not, we used to have a lot of numbers. We deal with a lot, yes.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but you can raise the podium. I think we might be able to hear you more clearly if you're closer to the microphone.
I have no idea how to do that.
Oh, yep, yep, here we go.
See, I guess I need to spend more time in front of council than I can do it.
Yeah. There you go. Thank you.
I guess most people aren't up this high, I'm sorry about that. But what I was saying is, I've been the judge here in Olympia for almost 15 years, and it'll be 15 years this month, and doing the things that we've done over the years haven't worked. I'll be the first to admit it. We need to do things differently. We need to change, we need to have restorative justice, we need to do things differently, and that's, that's why we started the Community Court. We worked with the Center for Court Innovation on getting started with that. If you can see, we work with a lot of numbers, and I'll tell you some of our numbers, but we've had 337 participants, 156 graduates from Community Court. And if you see that number, 82% of those graduates have not recidivated. And so what that means is they're not committing crimes. If you, there was a study done in, or studied in 2014 about inmates in 2005, property crimes, 82% of them did recidivate after five years. So we're seeing the opposite, the opposite effect. Putting people in jail is not the answer. Putting people in treatment is the answer. Putting people in house is the answer. So those things that we need to do differently. And I appreciate that the council has the foresight to be able to get us there, too. So we started, as Diane indicated, we started with no money. We had a grant from the federal government and the Center for Court Innovation, and then, once we got going, city council decided, this is a great program, and we're going to, we're going to have to fund you fully, and we appreciate that. And so we are able to do some amazing things because of your support. You can see, we have our community garden, it's, we have folks working, our participants work in the community garden, they also reap the benefits of the community garden. They're able to take home the vegetables that they grow. And some, it's to help with those, and any leftover vegetables go to the food bank or other, other local areas that we need that help. We also get back to the community. We have a number of people work on our work crew, work crew hours and community service hours, people giving back to the community. If you look at that, 3,277 hours, about 408 days of people, eight-hour days of people working back, giving back to the community. And everything that they do is to work, we want them to be able to be productive. We want them to be able to make changes in their lives. And so it's all about the individual and making changes, and so getting to be where they want to be. That's the first thing I tell them when they come to Community Court, is I don't care what the charges that got you here. What we want to figure out is what happened in your life that went, that's going wrong, and what we can do to help you to get to be where you want to be. And so, like I said, we give you a lot of numbers, and, you know, the most, and Diane Whaley can give you a lot more, but the most important number is one, because each individual is the most important thing we do. We, we have to get to know the individuals, we have to work with them. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to one of those most important individuals, Cassandra Sinclair Nixon. We call her Cassie.
All right, the podium's already nice and tall. I can work with it. So I'm Cassandra Sinclair Nixon, I'm a graduate of the Community Court Program. Ooh, I can lean on it, too. So I want to start off with a little bit of a parable here. So say you've got two folks living on two plots of land next to each other, and one of them is a builder, and the other is not. And the other would like to build a house, and the other continues to try different variations on a theme that they are familiar with, and continues to not be able to build this house. The builder next door comes over, continually says, nope, not that way, nope, not that way, nope, not that way. What the builder isn't doing is giving an example to the other, to the neighbor, of how they could be building that house. So when you're continually involved in a judiciary system that puts you in a position where you are being told, no, you are not right, you are not correct, this approach is not a viable approach, it is not conducive to being a member of our society, that's all well and good, but it, it doesn't provide a framework of how one could potentially create a life that is conducive to being a viable member of society. Community Court provides that, that structure and that example. So I walked into Community Court about a month and a half after I'd been arrested. I was arrested for breaking and entering into a vehicle, grand theft, and I was high on narcotics and was not seeking help. I was in a state of full psychosis. I had an unaddressed mental condition, and I didn't understand what my resources were or how to access my resources. Now, my, my interaction with the judiciary system prior to Community Court had been, as I said, no, this isn't working, but continually just birthing me back out into society without any new tools. All of a sudden, I found myself in a space where I had an opportunity to link up with SPSCC, so I could get my GED. I was a non-graduate. I'm now in my third quarter of college at SPSCC. Again, that's due to Community Court. After I got my GED, again, the SPSCC services were right there, able to provide that one-on-one interaction, and non-interaction of upper to lower. We tend to have a lot of presentation in our, in our culture, I feel, that is speaking up to down or down to up. It's lacking equanimity. In Community Court, you walk into a room and everyone is on the same level, so there's a sense of equanimity that you don't necessarily get in a standard judiciary system. And for those of us that have had a difficult time with authority figures, being on an even keel with somebody can represent safety. And when you're used to being in situations where authority figures represent a lack of safety, it's very difficult to communicate from a place of honesty and integrity, because one feels that they are protecting themselves. But if that equanimity is there, one can communicate from a place of integrity and honesty, because you feel safe enough to disclose what you're actually dealing with. So I personally believe, as somebody who is now coming up on a year clean and sober, is getting an education, is in healthy housing, which are things that if you went back four years ago and told me that, I would have laughed, as somebody who's in that position right now, I can advocate for the necessity of this program continuing and continuing to get funding. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's all I got, you know? I'm, I'm not a promise, but I'm a potential, and there's a lot more folks who could embody that potential if they were given the opportunity. So, yeah, thank you.
And at this time, I would like to introduce Brett Taylor from the Center for Court Innovation.
Mayor, council, city officials, and guests, thank you so much. First of all, I'm not as tall as the judge, so I'm going to lower this a little bit, otherwise I have to stand on my toes the whole time. I'm Brett Taylor, and my colleague, Kaitlin Flood, we are very honored to be here. And before I speak, I just want to say, Cassie, it's amazing strength and courage it had to share that story, and I'd like to thank you again. She's the kind of person that makes working at Community Court one of the most awesome experiences you could have. I was privileged to be in a Community Court as a defense attorney for a number of years, and had many stories like that, and I can tell you, a story like that beats winning a trial any day of the week. So, in 1993 is when the first Community Court was opened in New York City. By the early 2000s, there were about two dozen across the country, and our organization, the Center for Court Innovation, had a hand in launching many of those. And by that point in time, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, which is a department from the Department of Justice of the United States Federal Government, asked us to create a Mentor Court system that would allow jurisdictions across the country to identify a particular Community Court that is a lot more aligned with the practices they are doing, because these Community Courts are very different, and they all attack different issues and problems that are in their communities. And it's kind of funny that Cassie used that building analogy, because I always explain to folks when they say, we love this court, we want it, and I'll say, look, this is like building a house. If I asked everyone in this room to give me your perfect house that you wanted designed, we'd all have a different house, but it would be a house. And that's the same with Community Courts. They have to address your local problems, your local needs, and your community's ability to resolve those. So by 2008, we started the Mentor Court Program, and we selected through a peer-reviewed, competitive process, the first round of Mentor Courts. The third round of Mentor Court applications came in 2016? Okay. And the fact that Olympia was chosen as a Mentor Court was pretty impressive because of the fact of how new they were and how young they were. It's akin to a rookie winning an MVP in a sporting league. So we are very impressed with this court. They have amazing leadership, they have great collaboration, they have a judge that gets it and understands that this is not about him and being a judge, but him serving the community and making sure that the people that need the guidance are getting the guidance, getting that encouragement, and being able to turn their lives around and become, there's going to be a lot more Cassies walking around here in Olympia, as long as this court is still up and functioning. And so with that in mind, I would like to say that, you know, Olympia is one of the four current Mentor Courts across the country. They were selected, again, just in the same manner as that a first class was, was through a competitive, peer-reviewed process. And as a result, I do have a little plaque I'd like to deliver to council and to the mayor, if that's possible. I don't know if I could hurdle this thing, so. So my colleague and I will be here if anyone has questions. If you have questions now, we would definitely answer them, and we'll stick around later. And if other people have questions about this process and Community Courts, we would love to answer them, so.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Gilman?
So we had a work session just before this council meeting, talking about, as our facility's aging, how do we build towards the future? And a big part of that conversation was that justice might not look the same in 2045 as it does today. What do you see in terms of scaling up these sort of, are these still a little niche, serving only certain kinds of misdemeanors, or do you see these scaling up to serve a broader set of situations?
It could be either. It depends, again, what the particular jurisdiction would prefer to handle. The Community Court I worked in handled every misdemeanor that came through three different police precincts in Brooklyn, New York. So there was not an opt-in process or a process where you got screened into the court. A lot of these Community Courts do get screened in because of, it's quite frankly, resource issues of making sure you are using your scant resources on the right people. But my belief in how this is going to play out is that there's a lot of creative approaches going on across the country in terms of where to place these Community Courts. And what people are finding that are running these courts is that there are certain individuals that feel very intimidated by going into a courthouse with all of its security and all the trappings and surroundings of that big building, and they're finding that holding court in non-traditional locations is the solution to addressing the population that you're trying to reach. I'm sure you've heard of the Spokane model that works in the library. That's a court that we helped launch about six years ago. There are other places that are doing it, and they're going to homeless shelters and holding court there once a week. And so I could see, as this model keeps going and taking root, that it's going to be in places we're not even imagining at this point. And also, as Judge Alf referenced, that he would like to see more restorative justice, that's something we've been practicing and doing in the Red Hook Community Court in Brooklyn for the past seven years, and we've had a great success with that. We have a lot of those sessions off-site and not even in a courtroom. That could be in any community space, and that's also using community members to help resolve cases, not just the lawyers and judges and people you usually associate with resolving justice issues. That approach is saying to the community, hey, these are your issues, and we- That approach is saying to the community, "Hey, these are your issues and we think you are better served." Right here, the quote that was up there about, you know, "Those closest to the problem know the solution." And we have found that the places that are practicing restorative justice are having incredibly low recidivism rates. The community is feeling much more connected to the justice system solutions, not just saying, "We have faith in the justice system, but we believe we're part of the solution." And quite frankly, in my opinion, that's who should be resolving a lot of these issues, is the community members themselves because it's their community. So I don't know if that completely answered your question, but I do think it's just how, it, it's how creative you could be in terms of deciding what you want justice to be in the next 20, 30 years.
Thank you. And thank you for the recognition and for including us as one of the mentor courts. We're very proud of our community court.
Well, it's not given. This was earned by you guys and earned by the, the staff back there. You guys should all raise your hand back there a minute, give a little, yeah. And the only challenge we're going to put down is we like to challenge all of our community court sites to keep pushing the envelopes and learn, we want to learn from them and share the lessons you guys are going to create with other people and other projects. So, we hope to come back soon and thank you for your hospitality.
All right. I think I've got a couple more comments that you might want to receive. I've got Mayor Protem Bateman, followed by Councilmember Parshali.
Thank you so much for the award. I also want to thank Cassie for your story. It takes a lot of courage and a lot of bravery for you to do that, and I really appreciate you sharing it because that's going to help people understand this program and what's, what's possible. We heard a briefing earlier tonight about this community court, a little bit about the facility needs, and now we're hearing more about the actual operations. And I think this is a court system, this, the community court is what we hope the vision for community, for court and restorative justice and the justice system looks like in the future. So I'm really glad and I'm really grateful that our community is fostering this now currently. And I hope that as we plan for the future, we can really think about how the justice system can be a partner. And all the folks that are here that work within the criminal, or the community court, thank you so much for the work that you do. I know that this is a team effort and Judge Alf, we're mentioned that your leadership and that you get this. All the partnerships and all the organizations that are there partnering with you are happening because of your leadership and because of your collaborative work. And it takes a team. And to be able to meet a person where they are, to get to the underlying issues and actually address what is underneath and thinking of a person compassionately as a human being, that's how we're going to get out of this. And you're right, these are our, these are our problems of our community. It's a reflection of ourselves. So, I mean, it's just, it's incredible, it's amazing, so glad. And also, thank you to the public. The public supported our public safety measure, which enabled us to expand our community court so we can have more stories like this and we can focus on, on really helping people. So, I hope to see, and I, I thank my colleague for the question about how we can expand this. I recognize it's an individual community's decision, but if there's any way that we can help expand this out even greater than just our community and the others, we would be happy to help. And I know that we're already, we're having tours and everything, but thank you so much for coming and thank you for the award.
And I do want to point out, there's going to be a longer presentation on the community courts and, and the award tomorrow at, what time? At 12:15 at the community court. So, we welcome everyone who can come and take part in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Parshali.
It's mainly to say thank you. Once, the first time I heard about the community court and then started to dive into it, it's yet another point where I'm proud of our city innovating and looking based on this box of justice and into restorative justice. So we can have stories like we heard tonight and that lovely parable. Thank you. I appreciate that. I also see, you know, we're a kind of a nexus, we're looking at a future justice center. Having this community court allows us potentially in the future to design a justice center that is not traditional, that will serve and expand our capacity in community court is exciting to me. And I look forward to what we can actually do with this, thinking outside the box and maybe not designing your traditional way up on a dais with a judge courtroom for some of this so that we can actually get more people graduating.
And I'm glad you mentioned that point because one of the hallmarks of a lot of community courts, and those of you who've been to the one here in Olympia does this as well, is the judge sits at eye level with his community. He does not sit up high and looking down on them, he's looking eye to eye to them. And that's very symbolic. And a lot of judges ask the defendants to approach so that they can have a conversation, shake their hand, things that you would never see in a regular court. And a lot of the community courts are also being placed within existing community resource centers so that it's, there's not a stigma of being seen going into this building because there's many things going on in those buildings. And quite frankly, the justice system should just be part of that narrative, not be the, the whole narrative itself, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. So I am now going to introduce item 6B, which is an update on the Thurston County's Homeless Crisis Response Five-Year Plan. So, just some background, Thurston County's Homeless Crisis Response Five-Year Plan is a framework and action plan for ending homelessness in Thurston County. That end goal and the plan itself are required by federal and state government in order to receive funding for shelters and other homeless response services. It's my pleasure to introduce Keely Marano, who is the, the new homeless prevention and affordable housing coordinator for, for Thurston County. And she'll be joined at some point by Amy Buckler, our strategic projects manager at the city.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. I am very pleased to bring the five-year plan and its final draft to you tonight. And there's a lot of ground to cover, so I'm just going to barrel forward. All right. So what is this plan? It's a five-year plan that in 2005, actually, the federal government asked all local communities to create a 10-year plan for ending homelessness. In 2015, when homelessness was not ended, they asked for the, all local communities to put forth a five-year plan. That five-year plan was drafted in 2016, 2017, and then was adopted formally by the Board of County Commissioners in 2018, June. In December 2018, Department of Commerce put forth five objectives that they would like, well, at the time, four, and then they added another one, that all local communities needed to address five objectives into their local plans. They could either amend that plan that had been recently adopted, or they could rewrite the plan. So as I move forward in this process, I decided we'll just give this plan an overhaul to meet these objectives. It is attached to coordinated entry. Coordinated entry must be addressed within the five-year plan. And it's a requirement of all programs and projects within the homeless crisis response system that are receiving housing and urban development grants, consolidated homeless grants, or any monies through local document recording fees such as $21.63 and $21, or $20.60. So about 90% of all the projects within our homeless crisis response plan or system currently receive some of those fundings and so therefore are adherent to this plan. It's also guidance for policy and for funding. So this document will be adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on the 29th of October and then will be delivered to the Department of Commerce. And then Department of Commerce will do what they will with it. But at that point, all of our, our funding decisions, our policy decisions, and then how the system operates will be kind of pivoting from this plan. So that's what this plan is. While creating this plan, we, all the, the core team of the Homeless Crisis Response Plan Group came up with some guiding principles in our framework. Our first guiding principle is equitable, and I, and I put that first very intentionally. So, in March of 2019, Department of Commerce put forth their fifth objective, which was not included in the original four objectives. And that was to address racial disparity within the homeless crisis response system. I take that very seriously, as do the folks that I planned with. And so we wanted to make sure that our framework was coming from a, an understanding of what equitable means, which is to be accountable of and aware of racial disparities within our system. And then coordinated, meaning it's a regional effort, it's sharing of quality data, it's consistent, which is trauma-informed, which is a best practice as laid out by Department of Commerce, and concise, meaning we're, we're moving people swiftly into housing as swiftly as we can. So that's kind of the framework of how this plan sits. In creating this plan, many stakeholder groups were convened. There was heavy participation from City of Olympia, City of Lacey, City of Tumwater. Staff members from each of those jurisdictions were fundamental in the creation of this plan. And so from City of Olympia, I want to thank Keith Staley and Amy Buckler and Carrie Retlin and Colin DeForest and their help and efforts in creating this plan. We also had all jurisdictions, all the law enforcement agencies within our county coming to the table and informing this plan. Various teams that sit within the homeless crisis response system, who are parts of our local continuum of care, were involved in this process, as well as the public through your planning process. So, as I said, it was an option to recreate this plan, to rewrite it kind of from scratch, and which is the option that we took. And in rather than burdening the public with multiple public processes, I worked together with your team to attend the listening sessions that have been a part of your homeless response planning process. And so in that, people with lived experience, as well as citizens of Olympia, were heard and their voices were, are reflective in this plan as well. So this is a quick snapshot of where we sit in Thurston County and also kind of graphic of how our system works. So currently, it is an estimate of 800 to 1,000 individuals who are, and families that are unsheltered within city, or not City of Olympia, but within Thurston County. For those individuals, were they to want to enter the homeless crisis response system, they could do so either by going through the coordinated entry system, which could divert them out of the system for a very, a very low cost or no cost at all into some stabilizing situation to keep them out of the system entirely. Or they could be referred into housing programs or into shelter programs. Or they might go directly into a shelter program and then be referred into the coordinated entry system program, or coordinated entry system. It's complex, I know, bear with me. So if they get, however they get referred into the shelter system, currently in Thurston County, in the warm weather months, we have approximately 357 beds. That does include the mitigation site, and I know that we're working on, on lowering some of those tent numbers. Also includes Plum Street Village, so that's why that number is a little bit higher. And then in cold weather months, which we are convening on November 1st, it goes up about 96 beds. Those beds are full, they are always at capacity. Again, the numbers down below that you see for housing units, those are based on 2018 numbers, so just keeping that in mind, they're not necessarily reflective of what's now available. However, movement into those projects is at about a 1% to 2% per quarter. So what that means is that people entering into the homeless crisis response system are exiting into those permanent housing projects at 1% to 2%. Most, entirely due to there just being a lack of some, of affordable housing and housing projects. So we have two pretty significant bottlenecks. One, shelter, the other, affordable housing. So, this is from the point in time count from 2019. As you can see, the reported cause, number one cause of homelessness is around job loss and eviction. I would also like to point out that if you look at the causes that are identified for folks falling into homelessness, domestic violence, mental illness, family rejection, physical disability are all issues beyond an individual's control. And so many of the reasons why people find themselves on the street are because of issues that are affecting them that are beyond their control. And that's really important to kind of hold in terms of context of our current situation. Bringing attention to cost burden home households, this is from 2015 Washington State Housing Needs Assessment. However, Harvard came out with their 2019 housing data. And for Thurston County, our renter households are at a 48% cost burden. So 48% of our renters are cost burdened. Of those, 20% are severely cost burdened. Cost burden means that they're paying more than 30% of their income for rent, severely means over 50% of their income for rent. So we have a significant problem with cost burdened households, particularly renters. And we have a vacancy deficiency, as you know. When I was speaking to Tumwater, they stated that they had a 1.7 vacancy rate. And I know that across the county, it's between 2.5, 3.5 or so at any given day. And then we have stagnant wages where the out-of-reach report states that in order for a, a person to be able to afford a two-bedroom rental apartment, they need to make $22 an hour, but the average rental wage is 14 to 15. So there's many factors aiding and abetting renters who are at risk falling into homelessness. These are just some demographics. I'm not going to spend too much time on these. I know that the five-year plan has been sent, the draft has been sent to you, and it does go into greater detail around demographics. These are just to pull out some key areas where we see that we have a predominantly in the homeless population, white people at 60%, yet if you combine people of color in our homeless response, or homeless crisis response system, it's a significant disparity and overrepresentation. Where 18% of people of color make up our general population of Thurston County, 32% of folks experiencing homelessness are people of color. So we have a significant issue around racial disparity within our homeless crisis response system. All right, this you are familiar with. So this slide, I apologize for the little fly-ins, I don't normally like using those, but this is just to demonstrate that due to the high, the unprecedented numbers of individuals experiencing homelessness that are unsheltered, cities and counties across the state, across the nation are dealing with the exact same issues that you are facing and we are facing as a county here. I have heard from Bellingham, I have heard from Snohomish, I've heard from Portland, I've heard from Minneapolis, I've heard from people all over this nation that are having the exact same conversations. And every community is grappling with how do we address this in a way that is both humane, that is efficient, that is accountable, that is economical. So these are some of the strategies that have been looked at, and I know that you have implemented here in the City of Olympia, mitigation or stability sites happening in multiple communities around Washington State, as well as tiny home villages, safe parking programs are being investigated and shelter-in-place models. So these elements are new to the homeless crisis response system and to all homeless crisis response system and have not before been an addition to five-year planning processes. So these are the five objectives that we needed to address from the Department of Commerce, the first one being identify and engage all people experiencing homelessness, not just people already engaged in the homeless crisis response system, but all people experiencing homelessness, which is a very tall order. Next objective, we must prioritize the households with the highest needs, and I will address highest needs in a moment. Third is operate an efficient and effective homeless crisis response system. No big deal. The fourth is a, a projection where the Department of Commerce gave us a model to plug in our numbers in terms of how many folks are we serving in the system, how many beds in all of our projects, to project where we're going to be in 2024, both in terms of how many households are housed and how many we can anticipate being counted in the point in time census. So that is a, a model that we have used, we've plugged numbers into, it's reflected in the five-year plan, we'll get to that shortly. And of course, the fifth being addressing racial disparities in the homeless crisis response system. So I'm going to do a really high-level look at what are the key strategies in each of these objectives and understanding those, the work plan is 40-some-odd pages long, so there are many strategies. All right, identify and engage. So part of that is increasing data quality. A data group has already been formed through the Housing Action Team. That group is looking at not only homeless management information system data, not only point in time count data, but is taking into account data that is gathered from other agencies that are working with the homeless population. That could be the opioid task force because they're gathering data. There are also agencies that work with the homeless community that don't, are not obliged to use homeless management information system, but they are collecting data. So we need to get everyone together so we can have a much more thorough look at what is happening, plus providing good technical assistance from our office as well as the Department of Commerce with specialized trainings. We're going to, of course, ensure compliance with the coordinated entry system as per the Department of Commerce's guidelines. We're going to increase outreach efforts, and that's to everyone. That's to all sub-populations and populations that are not traditionally identified in homeless crisis response plans. That includes people living in RVs, that includes people, we don't have, there aren't great strategies historically around reaching out to people in rural communities or students in higher learning. We have a, a growing number of students in college or, that are experiencing homelessness, and we need to come up with a plan for doing outreach for those individuals as well. And then to develop best and promising practices around outreach efforts that haven't, don't have best and promising practices, such as outreach to RVs. So this is a very robust section with strategies outlining outreach. The prioritization strategies, again, The prioritization strategies again must address coordinated entry and how we'll be in compliance. But then we also have strategies in there about how do we address prioritization through a racial equity lens? If one of the objectives is to address racial disparities, then we need to be looking at all areas of our homeless crisis response system through that lens. And then also prioritize youth and young adults according to best practices. The Department of Commerce, through the Office of Homeless Youth, has developed five strategies and best practices for engaging youth and young adults, and those were also highly recommended to be in our plan, and they are. So this section of strategy is fairly short, and when we're talking about highest needs, I'll get into that in a minute, but it is not mutually exclusive to eligibility requirements. And I think a lot gets lost in translation when we're talking about highest needs and eligibility requirements. They go hand in hand. This being, of course, the biggest section, operating an efficient and effective homeless crisis response system. So there are sections in this plan that definitely have strategies around will align with plans that are already in existence so as not to be duplicative, and I'll talk about that in a second. But one of the newer strategies within the homeless crisis response plan, five-year plan, is to engage our community, which the City of Olympia has been doing an excellent, excellent job with their homeless response planning process, but continuing that effort in a countywide way, engaging people with lived experience, engaging our citizens, coming up with good neighbor plans, addressing things through dispute resolution, just acknowledging that our citizens are a part of our homeless crisis response plan. They are, whether they opted in or not, and so we need to address that. And then all of the strategies are fantastic and creative, but they all come with a price tag. Our current funding system that we use to fund our system currently, excuse me being redundant, is not adequate, it's not necessarily making our system, it doesn't keep our system whole. We need to come up with funding, creative funding streams to make sure that our current system is whole, as well as grow and expand the efforts within our system. So there's strategies in there around funding. Definitely making sure that we're addressing the emergency sheltering needs, and by that I mean the mitigation, emergency mitigation projects is what I'm calling them, because they're not necessarily sheltered, but they're something. They're addressing the need of unsheltered individuals within our county. Strengthening prevention and diversion, which are two distinct methodologies, which I will spare you unless you have specific questions. Maintaining and strengthening our current shelter capacity, increasing our housing stock, increasing supportive services to make housing placements within permanent supportive housing projects stick and be sustainable and successful. And implement workforce development strategies. Also within this section, we address mental health and substance abuse issues, and in that strategy, we align very closely with the opioid task force and the response plan. So these are some of the numbers. Within the five-year plan draft, you will see how this worked in terms of the model and what our current numbers are versus what these projections are. So this is, as well as I could encapsulate that on one slide for a very short presentation, but these are some of the numbers that are projected for households that should be housed on an annual basis by 2024, if service capacity is increased. These numbers are also based on an understanding that there aren't, without taking into account legislation or increased funding, this is just based on the strategies in our plan. If we meet these performance measures, then these are some of the numbers that we can safely project into the future, that we can see people housed and potentially see people still being counted in the point in time. And finally, our fifth objective, addressing racial disparity. So we'll be using our data that we already have available to us to analyze and then move forward in some strategic planning, including our workforce within the homeless crisis response system, looking at diversity within the people providing the services, and coming up with strategies on staffing, considering consultation with regards to how do we move forward with a racial equity work plan. So coming up with a racial equity work plan for the system and then implementing it. So these strategies were not taken lightly, these strategies were not intended to be checking the box, the work plan or the homeless crisis response plan, I hope when you read the narrative, you can see that racial equity is peppered throughout the entire plan, and the planning committee took this task very seriously. All right, this is a graphic that kind of is, it's very juicy, there's a lot of things going on in this graphic, but what you really need to know, and if I could distill it down, is that right now, we have this much prevention, this much emergency response, and this much affordable housing. And what we're moving towards, hopefully with these strategies, is this much prevention, this much emergency response, this much housing. So that is the intention of the goal, to be efficient and effective and getting folks swiftly into housing and to mitigate the crisis that we're experiencing. The National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty in a study, they discovered between 2007 and 2017 that unmanaged encampments for folks experiencing homelessness, be they small or large, has increased 1,342% since 2007. And 2/3 of that was between 2012 and 2017. And that coincides with our recovery from our last recession. With prosperity in a community is a correlative increase in homelessness. So this emergency response is extremely necessary and just something that we've never had to deal with before in these numbers. So that's the overall, really, really quick snapshot of what the plan entails and what it contains. Again, I'm hoping that you'll have a chance to read thoroughly through this draft plan, and I'm taking comments until the end of Business Day on October 22nd. This is a living document, and so all comments absolutely will be read and cataloged and looked at and combed over, but we might not be able to fit them into this plan by the deadline, but that does not mean they will not be considered. It is, as Commerce has said, ongoing. We can add strategies, we can change it as we move along, but I would very much welcome your comments on this plan. Thank you.
Wow, did you take a breath?
No, I was trying to get like an hour-long presentation into like 20 or 30 minutes.
Boom, that was amazing, that was amazing, so much work there, Keely. And thanks to all the team effort that went into that, including our staff. So I will entertain some questions. I've got Mayor Protem Bateman followed by Councilmember Parshali.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Keely. That was fantastic. You distilled quite a bit of that report, your presentation. So first, I just want to say I appreciate the interest in the paradigm shift of resources devoted to addressing housing homelessness, this emergency that we're in. And I also acknowledge that all of the pressure is on the immediate response, the feedback, the visible nature of folks that are living unhoused, and to get us to switch to the prevention side and the production of units is well worth noting, and I would love to have us get there, so I'm really appreciative of you. We've been having that conversation here, so thank you for articulating that for us, it's good to know. And in that spirit of moving there, you know, one thing that we definitely have a lack of and need more clarity on is the data element, and I noted that you reported in the document that there are other states that do not require HMIS to be an opt-in, they just automatically opt-in and you can opt-out. Is that a legal RCW?
That is, Washington State is the only state that is an opt-in for HMIS data, and that is due to domestic violence laws.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you. And then it only applies to individuals that are quote actively seeking services. Is that also a state, where would the change come from? Would that be Commerce?
Well, I mean, I think philosophically speaking, somebody has to consent to filling out an intake. So really, it's someone consenting to filling out an intake that would get them enrolled in HMIS.
So it's not necessarily that they're actively seeking, it's just the intake process itself. Okay, thank you. And then I just have a couple comments, and then I will step aside. So I appreciate that you have noted in the report an increased access to mental health and substance use disorder treatment, which we absolutely support. We've made that a legislative priority, and we've been supportive of places like the Buke Clinic, so thank you for that. The increasing permanent supportive housing units, I think you mentioned 300 units will be funded, and I was curious if that was through the home fund that you were thinking?
That was a strategy that was put forward by Carrie Rettlin from the Home Fund Manager.
Got it, so that correlates to what we're doing with the home fund, perfect. And I note that you also note a regional countywide home fund possibility.
Well, it's an exploration into possible funding.
For sure, it needs to start there, so that's great to hear. I'm happy to help if you have any interest in that. And then I also really appreciated, you know, as you talk about our paradigm shift, getting to a place where we do more of rent stabilization, producing affordable housing units, that in the meantime, we're focusing on emergency mitigation. I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, an identified number of how many shelter beds we need. The question was posed at one point in the report, and I know that there is conflicting opinions about do we invest in shelter beds versus actually investing in housing, and I completely agree with that and hear that, I guess I just, you know, we as the city with all of the shelter beds in our city, if not 95% of them. I guess another question I have is how are we going to get our regional partners to step forward and take a more active role in addressing some of these issues? And I know that's a heavy burden to bear for you. And then I really appreciate also that you note the correlation between people's incomes, as you stated, and then also the availability of housing, and you note in your report to advocate for policies that support increased housing density in the spirit of affordable housing. And as a council that has advocated for increased density at the state level, I can say that your voice and the voice of folks in the stakeholder community articulating that would be really valuable to hear, because when we talk about this increased number of folks that are homeless, the 1,000% increase that you noted, they're living in unmanaged camps, yes, that correlates with the recession, or coming out of the recession, but there's also specific land use policies that every single local jurisdiction has in place that restrict the types of housing, including dense housing that you refer to, to increase the number of units. And that's a tough thing to tackle, a tough nut to crack, but you've articulated it here, so that's why I'm bringing it up. And I think, I guess, I don't know how the county could play a role in that, but until our local communities step forward and make those changes, it's hard for me to see a way that we're going to increase the number of housing units to get to that bigger paradigm shift that you're talking about, where we actually, in addition to public housing, and you articulate some ideas about that in here, so I'm with you on that, and we would love to help if that's possible. And I think, oh yeah, the cataloging and aligning all affordable housing plans with HUSPAL 1923, we know that Carrie Rettlin, our home fund manager, is working regionally now to create a, we've got, there's grant dollars available, so we will be doing that. So thank you for looping that in as well, and that's also a great strategy. So thank you, great work.
Thank you. May I say one thing? I left out a great big omission of someone who helped write the original plan and helped me on this plan, and that is Anna Schlecht, and I cannot omit that name for all the help that she gave, so I just wanted to say that.
Thanks for adding that. And I also want to call out Shelley Slaughter, who is in the chambers this evening, who's our Director of Public Health and Social Services, and then Tom Webster, is he here tonight? I don't think I met him. So also want to thank Tom Webster, who's the county of the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. All right, Councilmember Parshali.
First, thank you. And I've started reading the plan, actually, it's excellent. I just want to echo Mayor Protem Bateman's comments that I like shifting and moving towards looking away from just the crisis response to how are we going to get housing and getting people into housing, because that's the ultimate solution, and I'm right there all along the way. I can't wait to make that pivot, because we have to move out of the crisis to the solution. Can you go back a slide? I just want to make sure I understand this, I only have a few things, a couple, it's the number four.
Oh, yes.
Right there. So by 2024, you're saying that we're going to be needing to house nearly 3,000 people? Is that per year or by 2024? That's how many people we will need to have housed that work previously unsheltered?
Yes. So in the narrative section of the plan, it's calling out that we have approximately 494 households that can be served at any given time with approximately, and in 2018, there were about 2,141. So this projection is if we move forward with the increase in our capacity, we can anticipate on an annual basis being able to house 2,972 households, understanding that in 2018, we housed 2,141. So it is, I believe, a projection, if we move forward ongoing 25, 26, that that number is a number that we can anticipate being, a number that we would see people being housed, households being housed.
And so the next one is just how many we can expect that would need it that year?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I love that you mentioned a living document, because, I mean, we've all talked about it, the potential for another great recession hitting us. How resilient is this plan to be able to deal with another onslaught of homelessness and unsheltered people or people living in cars?
Well, it's untested, but my intention with this plan is we're creating a homeless crisis response system work group, a funder's work group, and a data work group, and a regional racial equity work groups, because we have very specific performance measures that are called out by the Department of Commerce, that we will be held accountable for. And so one thing that we have in this plan moving forward is a quarterly eyes-on-this-plan, contrasting with data, contrasting with what's going on economically, so that we can address and meet the need of whatever's coming at us theoretically, theoretically, that's my intent.
Okay. In that call-out, do you have a mechanism that you'll be calling out to the smaller jurisdictions like Olympia, Lacey, Tombwater, when you see a trend that's actually fairly alarming, for example, say in midsummer, and we're looking at a very bad cold winter situation like we faced last year?
That's a really good question, but it can definitely be built into the report mechanism.
Because cities like ours will obviously be the most impacted on a situation like that. The last thing is, I know Lacey has done it, and Olympia is doing it, we have contracted a consultant to look at our financial economic environment of Olympia, which includes not only our personal median income, but also the living wage. And some of the data that is coming out, and I'm sure Mike Reed has talked to you about some of it, is going to indicate that portions of our county are going to have a higher poverty rate than others, we're also going to have a higher burden of renters than others, as well as a higher need for affordable housing. How are we going to be able to distribute some of these funds adequately so that it goes to the areas of the county that we actually need it and not into other areas that potentially actually aren't needing that kind of help?
That is a giant and important question that I will have to spend some time thinking about, because I don't think I have an answer for that right now, but it's an excellent question.
My question may be, my suggestion would is we're doing it in Olympia, Lacey's done it, maybe we can encourage Tombwater to do it, and maybe then incorporate it so we can actually get a good heat map on what some of these things are and be able to have an informed plan based on what the actual demographics are.
Thank you.
All right, I've got Councilmember Rollins followed by Councilmember Jones.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and the report. For folks who haven't gotten a chance to look through the report yet, one section I found particularly pertinent was on page 14, and it's the history of homelessness, just a short, I mean, there's books and books about how and why, but I really thought, I'm going to post that on my council member page, because that was really helpful. It's really looking at the 20th century and the rise of homelessness, but I also want to add that I was watching a Ken Burns documentary a few years ago, and he talks about how, so Sitting Bull, who was the chief of the Lakota Sioux, in his later years of his life, he was touring with Buffalo Bill's Wild West show, and so he got a chance to see what white civilization, settler civilization looked like, and he was so shocked by the homelessness that existed even back in the 19th century. He would often give the money that he earned from the show to people on the streets. So it has certainly been with our civilization for quite a while. Let me see, I... I also appreciate just laying out the landscape as far as our shelter bed numbers and that... I also appreciate just laying out the landscape as far as our shelter bed numbers and the, the decrease that we have this year, and the attention that the emergency response measures are getting, which, as you point out, is kind of a disproportionate amount. And it's kind of, it's odd because there's this general consensus around housing first, but the problem, and is that you lay out in your report, is that there isn't the housing. So it's kind of like, okay, then what do we do instead? I'm just, I'm curious on, well, on page, on the, the slide about the root causes of homelessness, and maybe I just understand the word root causes to be a little, to be different, but I see, I understand these things, and these are identified by people who take the census.
Right.
I would, I would understand those more to be triggers, I suppose, into homelessness. I mean, if we had, if we understood, if we had a system that had housing, that understood housing to be a, a right and an, and an infrastructure rather than a market and a commodity for certain people to make money off of other people, then there, then domestic violence wouldn't be a root cause of homelessness. Job loss or eviction wouldn't be a root cause. You know, you would, there would be other options for people to be able to afford. That's not the reality that we have, but I just, I just think the way we talk about it's important. As far as rural outreach goes, you probably, you may know this already, but I think Power had done some rural homelessness outreach some years ago, so that might be a good resource for looking at practices that they used. That's Parents Organizing for Welfare and Economic Rights. And last question, why is it hard to reach people in RVs? Or what's the, what's the development around, or the thinking around needing to develop best practices there?
So traditional outreach is, does, does not account for people that actually are sheltered because those individuals living in their RVs are sheltered. And so coming up with best practices for engaging with someone like, would you like to be referred into a homeless crisis response system and get into shelter? No, I'm fine. I have a roof over my head, plus best practices in knocking on someone's door or not knocking on someone's door if you're not invited. So best practices and, and street outreach are very specific, and so I would like, I personally, but then also for the system, want to know that we're doing it and causing the least amount of harm.
Right, okay, thank you. And then my last question, so a downtown business owner had reached out to me today, knowing that you were on the agenda and asking, you know, this is obviously about the five year plan, but what, knowing the situation as it is, with our shelter beds being so low, and the library going to be closed for a couple months in the coldest part of the year, his question was, what are we doing for this winter? And, and my response, and maybe you can fill in more, but my response is, as I understand it, the hazardous weather task force is look, is going to be convening and making recommendations to policymakers around what we can do as far as emergency response. I don't know if you had anything to add?
Sure. Yes, the hazardous weather task force is our third year. It is already a functioning regional body of individuals, providers. We've had representatives from four or five jurisdictions on that board or task force. We are meeting and convening around increasing some of the shelter in place activities, but then coming up with specific strategies to address any kind of dearth. Next week, we're having two very, two meetings, one a little bit more, a smaller group with some shelter providers, and then the larger group, which I believe is going to be quite large, to discuss strategies. So we are working diligently, we, last year, we pulled off an amazing Code Blue, 12-day Code Blue. So I have all faith in the hazardous weather task force. People come together for that task force, it really draws people into action. So I am, I have all faith that the task force will be putting forth some recommendations for addressing need this, this week, this year.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. So thanks very much for your presentation and for your work on this report. It's clear to me that you've got a whole team that you're working with, and this is the culmination of quite an effort. I wanted to acknowledge, Mayor Selby referred to you as the new homeless prevention and affordable housing coordinator, and once you finish your first five-year plan, you're no longer a new coordinator. You've crossed over the threshold. So thanks for bringing this forward, and I, I am really pleased that you've decided to not just update the old plan, but to really rework this and, and give it the fresh work that it deserves. I wanted to acknowledge that the first action item under the first objective is to increase data quality. And we've had discussions in the past when you've made presentations about data quality. And I just wanted to, it, it must be difficult to assemble a plan when you have concerns about the quality of the data that you're working with. So I wanted to ask about your level of confidence, and particularly as it, as it relates to just the base numbers of, of people that are affected, and then also the root causes that are identified in the point in time count. Could you just talk again about data quality?
Absolutely. This last year, we had the blessing of having a data analyst at the county by the name of Pam Gant, and Pam Gant is fundamental in creating all of these graphs and doing all the data analysis for this report outside of the point in time graphics. And so she has been able to generate very thorough, deep dive reports for quarter one, quarter two, and quarter three of our homeless crisis response system, all data that's run through the homeless management information system. She has an account, a Looker account, and a Looker account is a count that is very, very few, there, there's usually one person identified within a homeless crisis response system in a county that is responsible for pulling that data out and analyzing it. So I will say that in this last year, my confidence has grown significantly because I work very closely with Pam, and I understand the system very well, having been a provider within it, and having looked at the numbers and knowing that my shelter numbers weren't necessarily matching these HMIS numbers. And I think that that is shifting because there's been such a focus on data quality increasing across the board. And so it, I, I think with a dedicated data work group, which we have formed already, combining those data sets that we know address specifically the homeless crisis response system data, as well as opioid task force data and Office of Crime Victims Advocacy data, and coming, and then internal data, because I know some internal tracking systems have much more robust data than is reported on HMIS. So we'll be developing strategies to account for all of that data because, you know, the HMIS data that we have, which is excellent, is only those who have been enrolled in the system. So we need to get the data on folks that are not enrolled in our system. And that is going to take cooperation from providers and folks from other disciplines. So I'm really excited about it, actually. I've become quite the data nerd.
Great. Okay. Let me ask, you, we had a question about outreach, but could you just tell us what the, the state of outreach is in Thurston County right now?
Absolutely. We have grown our outreach efforts significantly. Councilmember Rollins, many years ago, instigated the Outreach Workers League, and now we have grown it to be a regional effort. As soon as I took on this position, I, I facilitated a street outreach program for five and a half years, and I understand the importance of street outreach. And so we gathered a few providers together that were already engaging in outreach, and it has grown. We have 20, 25 people at those meetings on a every other week basis, going into Yelm, making plans of going into BuCota, making plans of going into South County to do this important work. So I am very excited about not only our capacity, but the excitement that the outreach community has.
And so I guess my question is more about what is actually happening in the field?
Oh.
Can you describe that?
Yes, I, there, as far as I understand, I don't go out on outreach, but my understanding is just engagement and as, engagement and identification, not legal identification, but being able to build relationships so that engagement and identification is around relationship building. You can't make good referrals, and you can't get folks into housing if you don't have that relational piece. So a lot of it is relational, relationship building, referrals into services, and coordinated entry. Coordinated entry is also happening out in the field as well.
Great, great. You tempted us, you challenged us, if we wanted to know more about prevention and diversion, that you could take us there, but that you wanted to move quickly through your reporting. Just, maybe you could just give us some response. The, my understanding is that prevention and diversion are actually our really most cost-effective strategies. And I, I guess I'd, I'd like to know whether you feel the same way, and how large an effort is that in Thurston County now?
So prevention is a vital part of any homeless crisis response system, and yet, when we have an unprecedented number of unsheltered individuals living in our county, we, and based on the guidance and the, the requirements from consolidated homeless grants, Department of Commerce, and HUD, by their decree, we have to identify and move forward with coordinated entry efforts to prioritize those of highest need. And so when we're making funding decisions that are predicated on those being our priorities, oftentimes, prevention can be under prioritized because as we are all talking tonight, we've got to get folks in, that are already in the woods or on the street, into some kind of shelter or some kind of housing as quickly as possible. So when the focus is on emergency mitigation projects, prevention can be underfunded. So that isn't the intent of this plan. The intent of this plan is to find strategies to increase prevention dollars.
So thanks for that. My final question really relates very much to that. As you just said, we've got these mandates that we're doing this sort of mitigation work and that we're addressing those with the greatest need. And yet, your, I believe it was your final slide showed the interest in moving from an emphasis on unsheltered and emergency response, instead moving to prevention and permanent supportive housing. I'm very challenged to see how we're going to get from one to the other. We seem to be over, completely overwhelmed in emergency response right now. I have real concerns about the numbers that you're reporting, the amount of, the number of shelter beds and the number of unsheltered people that we have. And so I, I guess I'm hoping you can give me some confidence that we can make this transition, that we can, particularly if the fund sources are directing us towards emergency response. How is it that we're going to be able to fulfill the vision that you've laid out tonight?
The way, the only way forward is together. This is not a tomorrow, this is not a tomorrow plan. This is a five-year plan. We may not get to that in five years. We may get to that in five years, but we, but we, we all have to do it together. There are no quick and easy answers to that question.
Are there, is there direction? I mean.
That's what this plan is. This plan is direction.
Okay. All right. And then just one other thing. So hazardous weather task force, you're right, amazing response last year. If I'm right, that recommendation will come to us on the 29th, is that right?
The 29th is the Board of County Commissioners will be adopting this plan, is the 29th.
No, I'm referring to the hazardous weather task force recommendation. I think they're, I think they're meeting on the 25th, is that right?
We're meeting on the 25th, yes, that's correct.
And so that will, recommendation will, will it be reported here on the 29th? Do we know? If, if Olympia is a part of that response?
I, I had not heard of any plan about making a formal presentation to council. I haven't, I haven't heard that.
Okay.
Keith's stealing our attendance. We can report out during my reports on the 29th.
Excellent, okay. I, I guess I'm concerned that we're already experiencing freezing weather. We're already seeing people in our alcoves pretty heavily in downtown. And I just feel as though this process is, is pretty late in the season. And while I appreciate your confidence in their ability to move quickly and bring us a meaningful recommendation, it, it just seems really concerning to me that we're at this point, again this year, needing some sort of really expedited response. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we won't be here again in the future, but I'm really concerned that while we had a good response last year and were able, my guess is, or it certainly appears to me, is though the demand this year is greater than last year, and we actually have fewer shelter beds than we did at this point last year.
To be clear, shelter beds haven't necessarily been affected. We have about the same number of shelter beds this year.
Is that because you're counting mitigation tents in that count?
No. If you look at, last year Salvation Army wasn't providing any year-round beds either. They were under construction, and so that number is the same, the 30 beds that they are offering for cold weather are the same number, same number with CYS, same number with Family Support Center, same number with Union Gospel Mission. The difference is that Union Gospel Mission has been at higher levels beyond their normal year round. So last year, if they were hovering around 50 before cold weather, they could edge up to 80, so that provided us 30 extra beds. So it's not necessarily beds are lower, it's that the demand is higher. So they were, they've been around 70 in September, which means they only really have an extra 10 beds to offer for cold weather.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then just finally, do you anticipate that the hazardous weather task force will deal with the question of daytime warming centers? It's something this council has talked about in the past.
I anticipate that the hazardous weather task force is going to take on many issues surrounding the cold weather that's encroaching upon us, including all sorts of things, shelter in place, et cetera. And I have full confidence that we'll be able to address all the questions that the citizens and council have.
Great, thank you very much.
Right, Councilmember Gilman.
Keely, thanks for coming in tonight. I, I just had a really specific question first. At least in the, the version of the document that I had, none of the appendices were attached. Are they available on the website? So maybe I just got the short version of things?
We're just formalizing the formatting, but I'm happy to send you the appendices. They just hadn't been formally attached, and I was under the gun to get it into the hands of council, so.
Sure. And, and the reason I'm thinking about that is some of the meat of these questions, we've just been asking about capacity for this coming year, how funding might be allocated, looked like, like that four-L table of 2019 funding is, you know, it, it was particularly of interest for, for this conversation. So as, as that's available, I think that would be helpful, and I actually think that's pretty central to the area that we might comment on, are, are the, the actual funding and program priorities. And then, I just, first, I want to thank you for the, the work you've done to, to just freshen up the whole document and reframe and rethink it. I think that's really useful. And the, several of us kind of keyed off of your, your notion of eventually shifting the paradigm to prevention and housing and less crisis response. But I, I'm wondering, like, I, I don't suspect it's most cost-effective. I think it means living wage jobs, a more equitable way of dividing up real estate and housing, to have affordable housing or housing as a right, to have access to healthcare. So maybe it's not more expensive, but it does mean a dramatic changing of how we share the resources we have in the community. And it, it almost feels like that's a separate document. Your, your first sentence was about federal health and human services called for plans for ending homelessness, but then the meat of our conversation and of the document is about how to respond in a crisis to people who are on the street right now. And that's not even related to ending homelessness. That's how to try to maintain order and respond compassionately to people who are in crisis. Right? So are they, is, is there still such a thing as a plan or a document to end homelessness? Is that still a mandate?
So have you noticed the plan that was adopted in June 2018 was called a homeless and housing five-year plan? When the guidance came from Department of Commerce last December to amend the plan, it was a homeless crisis response plan, and the objectives were very clearly aimed towards unsheltered homelessness. So yes, there, you know, that, the affordable housing issue and the homeless issue are linked, absolutely, 100%, of course, they're 100% linked.
absolutely, 100%, of course, they're 100% linked. Yet, the taking on what Commerce has given us as objectives is heavily weighted towards addressing unsheltered homelessness. There is, there are so many robust efforts in each jurisdiction around affordable housing plans. I intend them to both be linked so that they can be in sync and they can be linked to this plan, just following the mandates that Department of Commerce had given us.
Thank you. So, there's, there's not actually a mandate anymore to try to make a specific plan that within a certain number of years, we'll have an equitable enough society, people will have housing, health care, and enough money in their pocket to live? That's not, that's, somehow, they stopped asking us to create those, it sounds like.
That's not necessarily true. The United States Interagency Council on Homelessness calls for a plan to, you know, for homelessness to be brief, rare in one time. And the department, or Department of Commerce, Washington State, has a goal of no person left living outside. So, and essentially, yes, it is a plan to end homelessness, but it is tilted by their objectives in one direction currently. That doesn't mean it's not going to change.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, and thanks for your work.
All right. So, we still have one more presentation on this item. And I thank you, Keely, so much. And I'd like to invite forward Amy Buckler, who is, along with Stacy Ray, leading our homeless response planning, which is a subset of the county's planning and is complementary. But I'm really proud of where we are as a community, and I'd like to hear more about where, what our next few months are going to look like.
Well, thank you. So, I'm Amy Buckler, Strategic Projects Manager in CPND, and I'm going to be very brief. I just want to give you a little update about Olympia's homeless response plan effort and how it relates to the county plan. So, as you know, last March, the city embarked on a public process to develop a homeless response plan and engage the whole community in the response, identify long-term strategies and actions, cultivate regional partners, and identify metrics to learn and track our success. So far, we've heard from over 700 people now at 19 different focus groups and workshops and an online survey. We've engaged a wide variety of people with different perspectives and experiences from within the community, Olympia residents, including individuals experiencing homelessness, social service, faith community, public institution, private sector leaders, downtown business and property owners, and city employees. We've gone through several phases in the process, learning and dialogue phase. We are now in the orange area here, where we have a community work group, who are 11 volunteer community members. They're taking everything that they've learned and heard and using that to develop strategies, possible actions, and measures of success. We expect that we'll have a draft plan to present in early 2020. So, the strategies are still being drafted, and they're falling into three different categories that our community cares about, that came out of the process, and that's the rapid response, the emergency services and that area, as well as longer-term strategies around affordable housing and prevention, and also, public health and safety. And I just wanted to indicate for you that there's a very, very strong overlap between what our community wants to see and what is in the regional five-year plan. We've heard support for everything that Keely presented on, but with really extremely strong support in our community for increasing data quality, outreach efforts, emergency shelter, supportive services, particularly, mental health and drug treatment, but also other services that help reduce people's barriers to housing, supportive and affordable housing, implementing workforce development strategies, strengthening prevention and diversion, continued community engagement and education. Just because you had that last presentation, I'll also mention, we have heard a lot of support for the restorative justice model and using alternative courts like our community court or Thurston County's Drug Court. We've heard the idea of a homeless court coming up that we want to look at more before we present some recommended actions to you. So, what we're going to do in our, as we're wrapping up the process, is we're going to make a really strong effort to do a crosswalk about how Olympia's plan coordinates with the regional plan. Many of the recommended actions will indicate how they're supportive of that regional plan, such as our efforts to expand emergency shelter in the shorter term, but our longer-term efforts to leverage the home fund to build 300 permanent supportive and affordable housing units over the next five years. Policy to require agencies that we contract with for services to enter data, to collect data and enter it into the HMIS system to improve data quality. So, those are some examples. But our plan is also going to include strategies and actions that are not addressed by the regional plan, but that are unique to the needs of Olympia, such as specific downtown programs. So, while our community work group is still developing those strategies and actions, there was a couple areas where they felt like there was more dialogue needed. So, we're having some upcoming workshops. Those couple areas that they want to focus the conversation on are addressing unmanaged encampments and behaviors that make people feel unsafe. These are things that, there are a wide range of opinions and perspectives in our community, and these are also issues that really touch people's core values and deeply held beliefs. So, we want to offer an opportunity for people to have constructive civic dialogue around these issues and be able to provide the community work group and use some more public input about this. So, those public workshops are coming up on Saturday, October 26th and November 2nd. The one on the 26th is 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at Olympia High School. The one on Saturday, November 2nd is 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at Capital High School, and we would really love to see as many people from our community there as possible will be geared up for that. We're also going to be holding a workshop for individuals experiencing homelessness in early November and have been engaging some other groups as well. We'll also have an online survey that comes out at the end of the month. So, people are encouraged to go to our Engage Olympia website and sign up for our email newsletter so they can receive updates about when the survey is available. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any additional comments or questions for Amy? All right. Thank you so much. And I really do want to encourage those of you watching at home, we have those two more opportunities to attend the public workshops Saturday, October 26th at 9:00 a.m. at Olympia High School, and then across town on Saturday, November 2nd, 9:00 a.m. at Capital High School. So, great opportunities to engage with the process. Thank you. All right. With that, we have a few more people here on our public comment signup sheet, so we'll go back to that. I'd like to restart the countdown clock. Is, that's all right, Kelly? We're good? All right. So, I've got Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Anne Hundley.
It is late and I am hungry. So, all I really wanted to say is that, as you can see, I have a huge diverse, diversity group, and we are very different, but we all have grouped together with the same concern as you've heard my girls talk about earlier. And I just, we're not here just to complain, we're here to communicate, we're here to participate. We want to be active people, doing active things to help this community, but at the same time, keeping our, keeping our girls safe, you know? And we just, we, I just want to reiterate that we so love Olympia, we do. This is going to be my home. I want to retire here, I want to live here, I want to grow old here, you know? So, anyway, thank you for listening to us, thank you.
Thank you. Anne Hundley, followed by Lauren Kingsman.
Thank you. So, I am here as one part of my own undoing my internalized white supremacy culture, and because racism affects us all. But we can and we must undo it by facing it. So, I hear the hot urgency of home, the homelessness crisis and climate crisis and health care. And addressing racism is also urgent because it eats away at our best natures. So, when we undo it, we can free up a whole lot of solutions that we need for these crises that we're dealing with. So, I've been learning about Justice Revon McDonald and then, her niece Talana. Her reasonable requests for the city have yet to be honored. So, I'm here to amplify her voice. She can speak for herself, but due to our country's systemic racism, her requests have yet to be, to be honored. Olympia is where I've lived for the past, Olympia area is where I've lived for the past 11 years, and in the past year, it was where I've been doing this work myself to undo my internalized white supremacy culture. And so, I have a lot of hope, and I really hope that when the last person was talking about togetherness problems, like the problems that are, take togetherness, it's not just a one or two or three people having the right answer. But I really hope my request to end with tonight is if everyone here could ask, what can I do to help ensure that Talana's requests are honored? Thank you.
Thank you, and Lauren Kingsman, Kingman.
Hi. My name's Lauren Kingsman, and I was here as I was getting kicked out of my house about two months ago, and that was the last time I really had a convenient, or not even inconvenient opportunity to speak here. And so, I just want to raise criticism that I think that public speaking should possibly be facilitated in like a broader spectrum and have more time for that, even though I understand that y'all are super busy. I am also hungry. I want to celebrate the fact that Olympia is a really progressive community and has been for all of the 30 years I've been here. And I'm going to bring some lived experience. And basically, what I'm trying to say is that the programs that are in place and some of the amazing things that I was seeing in these presentations, we are unique as a community to do that. But also, Olympia is pretty well-celebrated and well-known, and having publicity for that is like a catalyst for social change, as we've been talking about. That was actually my college sociology, like, final presentation was that, like, we are a catalyst for social change, and we do make changes. And we don't always agree on how they're supposed to be. I had a roller coaster of an emotional two hours listening to all this stuff. That said, I need to be heard. I've been homeless numerous times, and my partner of 14 years is living in a van with no F and, sorry, no, no heat. Well, I mean, there's electricity for heat, there's no water, there's, you know, it doesn't have a fridge, he doesn't have nothings. There's, you know, no bathroom, it's on a private property, and that's the best we could do, and that's his foreseeable winter future. My cat actually has a bathroom because I gave her the litter box, but she's in a van too, a different van. And I'm living in emergency shelter because after eight years of being a renter in the place that I was, I got kicked out, and all of us, 13 of us, you've heard about it, it's 10th Avenue. We've made front page. Anyway, I have a poem because this stuff is way too dry. So, here you go. Dear Council, what do I want? What do I want, people ask me again, when I say that I'm being kicked out? I go to the meetings and I'm here again, with a laugh and a cry and more shouts. Eight years moved by without much of a sigh, until now, when it's all ready, too late. What I want is space where my soul can lie, lacking gold that I'm asked to be paid. For a warm night is worth more than stars above, and I can't save enough gold to be worse. Can't live in my home, nor stay with my love, I start fearing my hometown is cursed. What do I want, I ask you again, needing help, I find only within. What can you do with our poor crippled folk, who despair but still live in this town? Being lucky to sleep in a van is no joke, when I laugh, my own tears are profound.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Partially?
I sit here after listening to a bunch of fabulous presentations and heartfelt public comment, and I heard, I heard all of you. What I would encourage you to do is participate in our engage and our process, and I've met some of you at this. You're passionate, we need your passion towards that. You asked me to speak about drugs. I quickly looked up the statistics for 2019 for opioids, and it's astounding. In 2018, when I gave a presentation to the state veterinarian opioid crisis, it was more likely for you to die of overdose by one and a half times than in a car. Already, in 2019, it's twice as likely. By the time the end of this year, we'll have lost over 500,000 people since 1998. We are losing more people every year than we ever did in the height of the age crisis. Yes, drugs are a crisis, but did you know that most of the people that die, and there's about 200 people a day, are housed? Okay? So, what, yes, we do have a crisis in our town, so I will speak to drugs. And I have served on the state opioid crisis task force and was the chair for the veterinarians, and how we can interact with the state and make an improvement. We do have a crisis, and it is overwhelming, and we do have predators in our town, there is absolutely no doubt. And we had a marketing system in the 1990s that was aimed to blame the people that were addicts and take the blame off the companies that were producing knowing, knowingly, these addictive drugs. And each time they came out with a new opioid, it was more addictive. And I'm a veterinarian, and I'm a doctor, and I'm a biochemist, and I can tell you that was knowingly done. So, yes, all of these guys are in court and bankrupt, but we all have to question our own motives when we get angry at this behavior. Are we a victim of this marketing that occurred in the 1990s and the early 2000s? And are we going to be a part of the solution? So, I ask you once again, please go to Olympia High School and Capital High School and help us come up with actions, because you guys have passion, I love it. We're going to need every single person in this community to fix this problem, and we've got a long road ahead of us.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman?
Thank you. So, some of the comment this evening was, was pretty specifically about the Fourth Avenue Bridge and the people camping under the bridge. And so, I wanted to give some of the experiences I've had in this last week related to that group of people. A couple of weeks ago, we made the decision to delay the clearing of that camp, and part of the arrangement was asking that concerned clergy facilitate some rulemaking and community building within that group in anticipation of their moving to another site. I visited with Pastor Amy La Croix last week, and I also visited with some of the folks who are living under the bridge now, and the conversation was remarkably similar to what Judge Alff was offering us about the community court, that there's been an interesting, to me, willingness to talk about what are reasonable ground rules, what are consequences that make sense. The mostly young adults, the folks who are living there, are learning about restorative justice as they're walking over to First Christian Church a couple of afternoons a week to work on a set of bylaws and skill-building around how you resolve conflicts together. And then, to the question, we also had some conversation both last week and this week about violence and about whether there were, you know, people whose behaviors couldn't be accommodated, couldn't be managed. And there was a particular incident where some of our staff felt unsafe. But the resolution that I heard about as I met with folks made a lot of sense to me. It was different from just, those are bad people, those are all bad actors. It was that those people were also afraid, the other campers, they called the police, the police responded, they arrested the person who had made our staff feel uncomfortable, and that person remains in the Nisqually jail right now. That just seems like kind of a normal way you would manage a situation where some people feel threatened or unsafe, is to ask the police to intervene. So, those are just some reflections that I had from my experiences with both the campers and the clergy who were facilitating this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollins?
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, for staying so late. I want to try to make sure I- sure I am able to at least briefly address the topics that came before us tonight. So first of all, to Talana and to Ann, I will continue to, to meet with you and other, and other stakeholders for accountability, and I want you to feel safe, and I want your family to feel safe. I want everyone to feel safe. But I want you to know that, and I wanted to just start out with that. Let me see. Oh, I guess, yeah, so the, the other main topic, of course, tonight was everyone who came out to talk about, about drugs in the community. And I really appreciate the nuance that I heard from a lot of people. That really touched me deeply. As some of you may know, some of you don't. I don't have personal substance use in my personal history, but in my family, a lot, a lot of alcoholism. And I've lost two family members to opioid overdose, so it's a really important topic to me. And I have, and the friends that I, that I have who have successfully recovered are very open about their problematic behaviors that they display, that they displayed or acted out, you know? So, and not that, not that people who use drugs are the only people who have problematic or abusive behaviors. We have a whole culture of, culture of abuse. And, you know, the people that are often the most abusive to us are people that are closest to us. And so I, and it's not necessarily a stranger, even if the behavior might be erratic or scary, which is real. So I just want to tell you, I, I heard that nuance, and I did hear the diversity, and some people were easier for me to hear than others. But you're speaking to a real concern. One thing that struck me, and I don't remember who said it, but said, how come you all are only talking about homelessness and not talking about drugs and opioids? And I, I realized, we don't have an opioid response staff here, but that is the county responsibility, and they have great staff. And the opioid task force, which I think Keely referenced, which is, is in communication with the homelessness response plan. Then we have a relatively new director who, of the opioid response who just came here from Lewis County, and she's amazing. And if you can, maybe as a group, I don't know what her schedule's like, but if you as a group are able to reach out and connect with her, it may be a worthwhile relationship to start cultivating for people who really, for anyone who really sincerely wants to be part of, of helping out this really beloved community that we have. I think this is an important conversation. It's totally one I'm willing to have, maybe even a panel. We've got a lot of great people in this community who have been through substance use or who come out, or who've been through substance use and come at it from a, from professional experience. I'm thinking of Sam Miller, Meg Martin, Candy, who I had to leave, but the author. It could be really interesting and important because as much, I think, and I think it's been important for our community to have a real conversation about homelessness, and I agree. We have to have a conversation about where they overlap and where they don't, but the fact is, there's a, we have a problem here and, and everywhere. What I would add to the conversation and my, my understanding at the, at, at this time, I don't view drugs as a root cause of anything. I view it as an attempt to solve a problem in somebody's life, and it's often, and I've even read from some researchers who compare substance use disorder to a learning disability, because it's like just continuing to try something that doesn't really work, or it might feel like it is going to work this time, or almost is close, you know? And then all the while, you're not seeing the impacts that your behavior has on the people that care about you or random neighbors in your community. But I don't think it's a root cause, and that's why I really appreciated hearing Cassie's story. What struck me about it, and this is what I've heard from a lot of people I know who have gotten through, is it, it, she wasn't, she didn't say that finally I found a system that made me feel bad enough about using drugs. Like, she didn't, that wasn't the message. It was finally I found a system that met, and, and people that met me where I am that were able to make me feel safe enough to be honest about the underlying issues, because there's always underlying issues. I, and then I think the last thing I'll add, I, I think there is a lot of, of comparability between the economic emergency that has pushed a lot of people off the cliff and into homelessness and natural disaster type emergencies. And I was looking at some information about the pattern of the spike of drug use that occurs in the wake of a natural disasters, like hurricanes and earthquakes, when, and it's really, it's, it's very noted. Also, so are suicides. And I've, I've been learning that in my, in my involvement with emergency recovery and response, in the, the, the way I've felt really appreciative to be, to be part of, of learning more about natural disaster response. But drug use spikes, suicide spikes. We don't really see suicide so much in the street community because there's a, a strong will to survive despite odds, but I do, but, you know, I think that coping and, and numbing with substances is almost like a suicide prevention. And so the important thing is the relational, the building relationships. And there's a lot of programs that do that in, in Thurston County, a lot of people that do that. It's not something all of us can do because of our own triggers around, around drug use, but, but it's that building relationships that's going to heal the trauma. Sometimes we get emails saying, why don't you crack down on these drug addicts? You can't crack down on something that's based in, in trauma. We can only heal that through relationship, meeting people where they are like Cass, like Cass described, and setting, and supporting systems and alternative ways of, of engaging with folks that are struggling with those issues, so that those aren't alternative courts anymore, so that that's just the way we do things. So I appreciate the ideas. Thanks for letting me go on a little bit. I know it's late, but it's really important to me, and I appreciate the, the honest conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
So I want to thank my councilmates for your comments this evening. I want to turn to the four or five people who came tonight with Ms. Moniz, if I said your name correctly, and I apologize if I mispronounced it. I also appreciate your sense of activism and care for our community and your willingness to come out and, and communicate with us and to communicate with the larger community. And I also want to recognize the diversity in your messages this evening, that you're not coming without your own individual thought process behind what you're communicating. So thank you for that. I also just wanted to acknowledge that one of our major media outlets, Como TV, has now doubled down on a very simplistic understanding of drugs and homelessness. And I very much appreciate that this group and others in our community are looking beyond very simplistic answers and trying to understand what our community is actually going through. So thanks very much for that. I also wanted to just acknowledge the folks who are involved in the climate strike and who brought us 600 cards from middle school and high school students and their message to us about the future and the urgency of action. So while they may not be in the room, I certainly appreciate them having been here. And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Post, who's still with us this evening. Thanks for your work on healthcare. A very important and timely issue that's before us. I do stand with you on the rights of humanity to healthcare and that we need to work together in order to assure that we're taking care of each other. So thanks for coming out and talking with us this evening.
All right. Anybody else? All right. We're now to council reports for the mayor's report. All I have for tonight, for the sake of the hour, is that we will not be having a business meeting next Tuesday. So our next scheduled business meeting will be Tuesday, October 29th. Go to my left, Councilmember Rollins.
Thank you. Just briefly, the community investment partnership met yesterday, the 15th. It was kind of a two-hour housekeeping meeting, so not a whole lot to report. But one exciting thing is Merritt Manor has their grand opening coming up, the 24th at 11:00 a.m. That's available to the public, to anyone. There's going to be tours of that housing, which is out Martin Way by the, where Baileyan used to be. There'll be food, and you can meet some of the people involved.
Thanks for highlighting that great project, Council, our mayor, Portem Bateman.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jones?
I also have nothing to report this evening.
Councilmember Gilman?
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. There, we had an amazing land use and environment committee last night, but I'm going to just very briefly tell you that we discussed the work session to talk about advocating for renters and that the regional body that Councilmember Cooper's been attending, general government and land use, all three have hands in that, and that, so we're hoping to move forward with that work session. I'm going to save the other exciting conversations for our next meeting, but I have one thing I have to say. Do you know what the 17th is? It is the Jim Moses Reeves Great Washington Shakeout.
You've renamed it. I like that.
It is the Shakeout this Thursday. If you go to shakeout.org, you can sign up your family or your organization, and it's, it's a way to sort of check your preparation to survive and recover quickly from an earthquake. And it also includes a really cool simulation. If you have a home stereo with good speakers, I suggest that you play the Great Shakeout through the biggest screen you have and with the biggest woofers you have, because it is a simulation of going through an earthquake. And it's a great conversation starter. So Jim Reeves and Elvis both wanted me to make sure that you had that on your mind. So, thanks.
Sounds like there's going to be a whole lot of shaking going on. All right. Councilmember Partially?
I have only one thing to report. We had a LOT, Water, Clean Water Alliance Board meeting. We talked about the reclaimed water agreements, which is an interjurisdictional thing to ensure that we get enough reclaimed water for each of our jurisdiction to honor our water rights. I believe that the task force has done a fabulous job in getting us very, very close to being able to sign this. Should be bringing it back at some point for us to be able to update it. It does seem fairly fair. We also discussed the cost of service update, which is where we're going to be looking at what the potential charges are in the future. We are going to be hiring a consultant that actually focuses on rate charging. In that process, we are going to be also talking about what we can do for affordable housing. Rich has been a fabulous advocate for that, and we will be seeing something in the next, hopefully, six to eight months on that one. We did talk about our budgets and Martin Way reclaimed water improvements and our capital projects. We will be hopefully having our UV light, which will be decreasing our carbon footprint once more, coming online between December and, and I guess February. I did want to point out, we did have one incidence of the LOT plant, which, by the way, gets awards for how clean we, our discharge into Bud Inlet is. We did have one instance for a day where we went over our limit. It turns out that we had gotten for two days in a row a high level of acid being dumped into our stormwater, such, so high that it disrupted our bacteria that helps us clean the nitrogen out in the particulate. And we had a crisis with that. But even with us going over our, our daily minimum load, we're still lower than most of the water treatment plants north of us that are hoping to get to five to 10, five to 10. We are only at 3.8. So for LOT, having a problem that wasn't even of their own making, they are searching because it was unfortunately appears to be too close to a deliberate dump of something from a commercial. And we'll be watching that in the future.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Partially? All right. City manager report?
I have no report this evening.
All right. So then I am going to state that we are going to recess to executive session to discuss matters related to real estate litigation, potential litigation. No decisions will be made. Meeting is expected to last no longer than, don't groan, an hour, and the council will adjourn immediately following our executive session.